Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our full council on the 29th of March 2023. And welcome to any residents or anybody who's watching this meeting this evening. Before I go into the main agenda, we're all aware of the passing of our senior technician Chris Barton last night. And it came as a shock because it wasn't, you know, as far as we were aware, he was overcoming his particular issues. Certainly, from the council's point of view, I'm just going to say a few words and then ask any members if they wish to say anything in relation to Chris. And obviously, we send our sympathies to Chris's family, his daughter Charlotte, and his close friends. And I'd like to think that although Chris was one of Ramsgate Town Council's employees, he was also a friend as well as a colleague. And I just want to mention one thing really, which is, which shows you what Chris was about, what kind of a human being he was. During the Covid period, Chris would pick up our fellow councillors at 6:30 in the morning to pick up food from the Salvation Army to be distributed. And he did that before he started work. And he did that throughout the whole of the Covid period. And he also delivered food as well to residents who couldn't, who were, obviously, we weren't allowed out, but for residents who didn't have the wherewithal. And I think that just shows you what kind of person that Chris was. Certainly, from a personal point of view, as being a chair over the last year, I've carried out some work with Chris. And his knowledge was brilliant. And his expertise was superb. And he could manage the force staff that he had very efficiently. And it was a very close-knit team. And that's why I think Ramsgate has gained significantly from Chris being first coming here in 2018. I just think that one other thing we should mention, he also gave his time and gives it, gave his time as a parish councillor for Cliffside. And he did what he could for the area that he lived in. And so we will all certainly miss Chris. And he'd be a very hard person to replace. But onward, the council must move. But I just would like to ask any members as well if they would like to speak or with any memories that they have of Chris with that. Councillor Harrington?
I'm totally shocked about what's happened. And I have nothing but good memories of Chris. He always went above and beyond the call of duty. He was always there at times when he didn't have to be there at weekend events and various things. And I particularly remember him helping us with the chairs after the Jubilee event, which was, you know, it went on getting those chairs away always, frankly. And he didn't have to do that. And it was really wonderful that he did help. And, you know, he always went that extra mile. And it's also, his humour and his wit and his knowledge is going to be sorely missed. Emotionally, just speaking about it, because I saw him the day before yesterday. And he said how much better he was feeling.
I think celebrating Chris's life with bad jokes is going to be a really important because Chris's humour, he was very perceptive, lots of wry humour. Also delighted in the bad joke as well. And I think that's something, I'll miss his company, I'll miss his support, but I'll miss his terrible jokes as well.
I won't. Rocher?
No, I think we all miss Chris. Yeah, I known him for a long time, actually, before I became a councillor because of, you know, where I live in Harborough Street. So he was always out and about. And we could see him anytime, you know, of the day, evenings, weekends, like you mentioned, you know, always there for us. I mean, for the last four years, you know, me becoming councillor. And whenever we needed him, he was always there. Just to call, you know, or to message him on Messenger, Chris was there for us. With any problems, he was always there. So it is, he will be greatly missed. And my condolences to his daughter Charlotte, because I met them quite a few times at the restaurant, you know, dining with them. So no, he will be greatly missed.
Thank you. Anybody else like to say anything?
No. Oh, sorry, George.
Sorry, that's all right. No, I just think that Chris will be someone that will be almost impossible to replace. Simple as that.
Yeah, yeah, indeed, indeed. I'm sure we, as a council, will sort some things out for his funeral and afterwards. And we will also look to see whether we can get something to remember Chris by in Radford House. And I'll leave that to Councillor Nicksey, who's the Chair of Radford House. But I certainly think that that's something that we should do to celebrate his time at Ramsgate Town Council. Okay, thank you, members. Right, let's move on to the agenda. Apologies. I've got apologies from councillor Wing on a family matter. Councillor Austin's here now. Councillor Young also with a family matter. Councillor Stuart and Linda Piper, who are getting over Covid. And councillor Crittenden, who I know I spoke to earlier, she's unwell. So that's the apologies. Thank you. Item two, declarations of interest. Anybody got any declarations of interest on the items on the agenda this evening? Take that as a no then. Item three, public requests to speak. There aren't any. Any questions from the public? And moving on swiftly to item four, which is the minutes of the council at the meeting held on the 22nd of February 2023. So could I have a, someone to recommend the acceptance of the meetings? Councillor Karina and Seconda, councillor Ara? All in favour, please? Thank you. The minutes are carried, thank you. Flame, we're flame. My item five, financial grants. And I'm going to pass you over to our Deputy Town Clerk, who will take you through these items.
Thank you, Chair. The first item is actually to receive a report on payments between the 1st of February and the 24th of March this year. Council is asked to note the payment is authorised by the town clerk or in her absence, myself, totaling £27,692.59. And to approve the payments above the threshold delegated to the town clerk and RFO and myself, a total of £147,416.53. Thank you.
Members, any comments at all?
So I need to propose on second.
I'm just, thanks to him. Councillor Green's still looking, so. As a Chair of Finance, I thought I'd better then keep looking. Councillor Green? Thank you. Seconda, councillor Harrington. All those in favour, please show. That's carried, thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair. Now we move on to the grants applications. We have various applications. I'm asking council to look at these and decide individually if you wish to award any funding from the next financial year's budgets. We're in that sort of period of time where we're crossing into a new council year. So it's entirely up to you if you wish to consider these or move on and pass them to the next council. Well, your first application is.
Chair, could I ask if we could, as a group, agree that anything that can be deferred to the new council should be deferred to the new council? And only consider the more urgent ones?
That would be my opinion. I would certainly.
Do you want to take that proposal?
Agreed. You want to, so, do you want to propose that?
Propose that anything that can be deferred for decision by the new council should be.
Councillor Isacki, second. Okay, all in favour of that? Please show. Thank you.
Okay, members. The first one is an individual, Carston Park in Fairleigh. We can move that to the next council. Screen Alley again are asking for money for equipments. Again, there doesn't appear to be any sort of time restraints on this. So that can be forward. Heritage Lab, they're purchasing the old Agent Stuns building. And this is for a ground floor toilet. I believe you can defer this one because the premises isn't actually being refurbished as yet.
If I can just interject there. Having looked at that application and the amount of money and grant money that they've got, it just seems a bit weird. Maybe it's just me, that they're now coming in for three and a half thousand for a disabled toilet. Now, why that wasn't included in, they've got A H funding. And I just feel that it just doesn't feel right. It doesn't sit right. But I'm happy to go for it to go forward.
Is that be the same thing?
Yes, I'm not denying that. But I'm just saying, we've got to deal with what's in front of us, so.
Members can make a decision on this tonight if you wish to.
Yeah, up to you guys, but up to you. Would you prefer that that goes forward to the next council? Yes? Yeah, okay. That's fine. Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
I can ask that and ask them to bring that forward. But I'll bring it forward when.
Yeah.
Okay, I've got that, members, thank you. Another one for the Ramsgate fund is from Winterstoke Gardens. This may be one that you wish to look at. The applicant is seeking funding for planting to replace dead and stolen plants with drought tolerant plants and shrubs. Also needed are more hand tools and to mend and repaint benches in the chine. I'm thinking you may wish to look at this one because of the time of year. We're now coming into a planting period.
Because we're not going to meet probably until, where there's here, until the end of May. So they would need to get, they would need to get them in by April, wouldn't they?
So they are seeking £1,200, thank you.
Members?
Councillor Crittenden gave the money from his councillors. The Winterstoke Gardens.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Yes. And I think that if I have monies that I've donated from my councillors' dance, which will disappear.
It's too late, it's gone.
Oh, it's gone? I forget that.
Yeah, it's gone now.
Where did it go? Sorry?
Because of Perda. You can't, you can't do it because of Perda.
Gone.
That does still wind in.
I know.
You want me from TDC manager?
We have asked about it because Perda happened early than it should have been. And so we will be for this, but we've been told not.
Yeah.
So.
So, members, is there a proposal from the floor in relation to the Winterstoke Gardens?
And, members, the balance for the Ramsgate fund is £22,000.
It's up for next year.
Yeah, it's for next year, don't forget.
I'd like first we give them the full amount.
The full amount? Seconda, councillor Green? Sure? Okay. Anybody got any other comments? So we've got a proposal for giving the full amount to the Winterstoke Gardens. All those in favour, please show. All those gays? That's carried, thank you.
Okay, the next one is from the Events Fund. The balance at the moment is £17,250. This is next year's balance. This is a request from the Lawns residents for £200 towards funding a street party for the 70 residents of the Lawns flats to celebrate the coronation of King Charles III in May 2023. You may wish to look at this one now as it's early May.
Members?
Can I first we give them the £200?
Seconda? Yeah. All those in favour, please show. Thank you, that's carried.
The next one is for Ramsgate Youth Football Club. They're asking for £1,500 for their annual tournaments. I'm not sure when this will take place. Oh, 23, 24, thank you.
I think we'll defer that. If your members are all right with that.
The next one is from the Ramsgate Small Business Group. They're asking for £2,000 from the Events Fund for Ramsgate Day planned for the 10th of June 2023. This is having to go through the Events Team at TDC. So there are deadlines to meet. So I would recommend that you do consider this one tonight.
The payment at what would be an annual event where you celebrate local independent businesses, bring shops and restaurants out into the streets, live music, other street entertainment, fill the streets with bunting and encourage residents and visitors to experience what our town has to offer. So it's quite a big event for the town.
Yeah. It's a big event and yet I'd like to know about what's happening there and what's happening in reality.
Yeah.
From what I hear.
We know what we've, we know what we've had in the past.
Yes.
So we need to be clear.
Yes, I'd like it to happen, don't get me wrong. And I fully support it. However, I would like it to be a bit more clear.
I think it would be ideal to get for them to come back with what they're going to spend the money on.
Yes.
So that we're clear as to what that is, because there isn't any specific from what I can see.
That's exactly it, thank you.
Councillor Green?
Could I ask if they provided the usual information?
They, as far as I can tell, they have. This could be looked at in the April meeting. So what I have, I have. Wait with me a second. Everything that they're going to spend the money in, that they've put in here, is on your, in your report. Don't have, I don't have finances, by the looks of it.
Do you have a lead on it?
Institution and.
The lead. Do you want to defer to April?
Yeah, if we can get that information.
Chair, sorry, maybe it is, I should have declared my address. I am involved with this, so maybe I can't say anything.
Yeah, thank you.
I'd like it to be clear. I feel like I'd like to support it very much, but I would like to know a lot more about it. Who's leading it and what's going to happen, specifics?
Are members in favour of carrying this forward to April to look at that information?
Do it all then.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, contact the.
And we've got a meeting. Frankfurt, do you, does that give them count?
It's 14.
It's April, isn't it? So they've got two miles now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We've still got a meeting before we finish.
It's 14 weeks for TDC to have applications in. This is why they come into us so early.
It's tight.
It would be tight, yeah.
Could we, well, we could bring it to another meeting if necessary. So if we give this an agenda for two weeks and bring it to another meeting, is that possible?
What have we got on the, what's on the, our agendas for? What meetings have we got in April?
Well, we have F and GP next week.
That's what I'm thinking.
If we can get it on F and GP, if Chair's all right with that.
It would need to be ratified by council at the end of April, so.
We can do that.
We can't actually make the decision. We can recommend to council.
At least they'd know they have the money, maybe get it all rolling, couldn't they?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine, I can do that for you.
Okay with that, that's good then.
And finally, an application to the Community Services funding. This is your funding that you've given money to the CAB and the Ellington Park Cafe. The application is from Discovery Planet CIC, £4,500. The balance remaining in that funding stream is only £8,489.05. The funding will make Discovery Planet HQ available for the delivery of free accessible beneficial events and activities to schools, community groups and the general public over three months. Funding will be applied to the core monthly costs associated with running the space, which is rent, utilities, insurance, project management, administration and coordination. Thank you, members.
Members, any comments? Councillor Green?
This is an excellent organisation.
Yeah.
Very fortunate that it's working so well. I'm reluctant to give quite so much of the budget because it's next year's budget.
Yeah.
So I'm going to propose £2,000.
I'll second that.
Second that. Anyone else any comments on that? We've got a proposal and seconded. All in favour, please show. Thank you, that's carried.
And that's the end of your finances and grants.
Thank you, councillor Ara, and enjoy getting over your files. Okay. Item six, a report from E K R C C. And I'm passing you over to.
Members, as you know, we have the Use Can't Rape Crisis Centre counselling in our room downstairs. Originally, it was two days. They've now extended to three days. And the lady is here between nine and five. So she has a full day of counselling rape victims, sexual abuse, et cetera. And they've basically come through with their reports. They've had, they've received 134 referrals for survivors residing in Ramsgate. Seventy-four seen at the Ramsgate outreach, so downstairs. And in October 2022, this is why they've extended. They're saying we experienced a dramatic increase in demand for our counselling provision and currently are receiving between 200 and 250 referrals per month.
It is absolutely shocking, but they are fantastic. The work that they're doing is amazing.
That's right. They've, we've recently expanded all our outreach provision to a minimum of two days. But they are saying Ramsgate three days, so obviously that's here. And Dover at five days per week. So they are.
So all your asked members about the report.
You did receive all the stats, but we want those results.
Would hope that they would continue to get support from us, yes?
Yes, yes, yeah. Yeah, I think that's something that.
Which I think is something that we should, we should certainly continue. I would, I would hope so. I would hope so. So all noted, members, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, yes, they're fully aware. I think for them, their funding is the room. The room is what they, what they have from us.
Right, item, item seven is the war recreation ground. I'm going to get councillor Austin to give you a report on it. It's not for decision per se about what happens in the war, in the war wreck. And I also want to be careful with, pardon the pun, with councillor Austin because we're in Perda and it could be seen to be electioneering. Electioneering. So if you could just give us a brief outline of that and then if you could leave after that and we get members to discuss and to agree whether it goes forward or not, if that's okay.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
Thank you.
So councillor Wing and I and a number of other people, most particularly Maxine Morgan, have, are part of the Ramsgate Skate Park project. We are part of that project. We've been involved in that since long before we were councillors. And it's not because we are councillors that we're involved in it. It is about trying to revive and improve the state of the skate park of the war, which is in a pretty dreadful state. And there is unused land in that area, which could be quite easily turned into a more attractive space, even if the skate park took longer. We submitted a proposal as required by Vanet District Council for anybody who wanted to do anything on TDC's land. This came up as a result of the misunderstandings about planting, tree planting.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So we submitted in April a proposal to be allowed to fundraise for the skate park and the surrounding area. And we had a staged plan. If you recall, this council approved money for a mobile skate park as an interim activity, which has been used up at the Royal Harbour Academy and which we hope to use again over the summer. And we had a number of other stages to improve a picnic area by the playground and to improve the basketball courts and so on. Pending, being able to submit a capital bid to Sport England, which we had had the nod would be happily received for 50% of the funding required for the skate park. Vanet District Council, we reminded in June, we reminded in July, we reminded in et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. We finally had the meeting with the key personnel at the beginning of this month, by which time Sport England had run out of capital money and won't have any more capital money. So that rather changes the dynamic.
Can I just ask you a question here? Can you apply in the new financial year?
It's gone.
It's gone.
Sport England no longer has capital funding for the foreseeable future. That's, it's been taken out of their hands and their responsibilities are more about promotion of sport and inclusion and so on. Lots of great things. They will fund some revenue projects, but they won't fund anything that's actually about the physical space. So we're back to sort of looking at, well, you know, we do have threats down there. You know, maybe somebody can curse you up to them, et cetera. A variety of other options to consider, but it's a substantial amount of money. So whatever happens, I wouldn't want anybody to think that this is going to be an easy thing to sort out because it ain't. The issue on funding, particularly with regard to the capital funding, is that if a body like Sport England and other similar funding bodies knows that a facility belongs to a council, and that could be our level of council or it could be TDC or it could be KCC, they will, but on principle, only fund it 50%. If, for example, a facility belonged to a friends group or a trust, it might be possible in some circumstances to get 100% funding. So that was the kind of discussion that we were trying to get going with Vanet District Council. About if you're thinking about wanting to get rid of either this part of the war wreck or the war wreck more generally, obviously, the first thing you'll think of is Ramsgate Town Council. But there are other options and there's a weighing up of options there. So all I wanted to do really was flag up that Vanet District Council are interested in the possibility of disposing of that section of the war wreck, which does not include the children's playground. We made that very clear, that we wouldn't want anybody to try and take on those sorts of health and safety responsibilities, which sit quite properly with the district council. But that there is a discussion to be had by the new council about whether it's interested in exploring that or not. And, and a discussion about what the liabilities obviously would be for Ramsgate Town Council. But also what would be the best way to provide those facilities for the people, the young people in particular of Ramsgate? And how, and how that could best be taken forward? So I wanted to flag it up at this stage because we'd finally had the meeting. But obviously, in terms of our decision making capability, it needs to go.
To save me asking you to go, I think.
Shall I go?
No, 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 I've just, I think if we note the report. No, 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 I've just, I think if we note the report.
Yep.
Instead of making a decision on it.
Yes, there's no decision to make at this stage.
Note that, I think there are, you know, certainly, Chris gives a skateboarder, so, um, that I can tell us that he's a skateboarder, who he's done. Um, I, I think it's great, you know, I think the whole thing, if any, if we can get the kids to in, interact in sport instead of on the street, it, that's, that's a good thing. I think there are other ways of looking at how we, maybe R T C could help, and I think that's, as you quite rightly say.
Discussion, yes.
For instance, a licence, instead of it coming as a.
Is it a, yes.
Transfer.
Yes.
A licence.
License or a, or support for a friends group or something other.
I, I think now that's something that then that we can, whoever's there will discuss.
This recommendation?
Um. Yeah, there is a, a recommendation, actually, I haven't got it here, um, that a town clerk to explore with district council and the Ramsgate Skate Park Group, the possibility of an asset transfer, blah, 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 and return to the council with a report on options, um, I, I just think, um, we, we should note this for now, I don't want to take it any further than that, for now, council agree?
I should declare for information that I've been approached by two individuals that, uh, that would like to set up a Friends of the World War Rec Group.
I thought I'd already heard.
No, it's very prototype.
Yeah.
But, um, it sounds as though.
Yes.
Should get.
Because we've had, we've been talking to.
Well, that's something to discuss.
Yeah.
We'll carry this over, yeah, so we'll carry this over to the next, uh, for the new council and, um, then depending on. Laura.
Yes, can we ask the town clerk to do?
And then we'll ask, we'll.
Information search in the meanwhile.
Get that, yeah, we'll get that on the move, yeah, okay, thank you ever so much, members.
Can you get a second?
Yeah, can I have a second for that, just the second council executive, so I'm looking straight at George. Okay, um, item eight is an update from council representatives and, uh, eight point one is to receive a note, an update from councillor Avenden following the inaugural meeting of the Clock House Focus Group, would you like to?
Yes, uh, well, following the meeting, uh, it's come about that a key element of heritage lottery funding stage two will be community engagement with our residents, and basically they're looking at having a coordinated, uh, new actions policy.
Right. Okay.
Good.
How does that tie, how does this tie in with the levelling up money for the clock house, does it tie in at all?
No, it doesn't tie in with the levelling up funds, because the levelling up fund is.
I didn't know if anyone had talked to T D C in relation to what you.
No, uh, this has nothing to really to do with T D C.
Good.
Because. Basically, what it is, T D C are responsible for the development, the design and all of that.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, once the survey's been sold, uh, and legal papers have been completely sorted, uh, Michael Listane, or I should say the Steam Museum Trust will transfer their collection to the Ramsgate Society.
Okay.
And there is actually no money in the levelling up fund for setting up a museum.
There isn't, no.
And so basically, they've got heritage lottery stage one, and now looking at heritage lottery stage two, uh, they're, they're keeping within the two point five million pound criteria.
Yeah.
And then obviously a key element now is that it is public engagement with our residents, that it, that, that what they have to do is prove a need that the actual public wanted.
Yeah.
And they have to prove it will work, for it to work, keep, have the residents on your side, yes.
That's a lot of door knocking for you, then.
I know, it is. I mean, I have done my homework on this, I've really done a lot of homework.
Yeah, I know.
I mean, I could take all this on quite easy, you know, and obviously you're looking at, at what I do on social media and.
Yeah.
Everything like that.
Yeah. That's agree.
Could I ask whether T D C are willing to house the museum, bits and pieces?
Oh, yes.
In their building?
Uh, well, what's going to happen is that, uh, obviously when there's the move, T D C are going to make, uh, storage space available, uh, for the collection. And also, there's quite a number of T D C loans in there, that they don't even know they've got, they've loaned to.
To tell them you've said him.
If you see, it's, the loan situation is quite horrendous really, because there's seven, there's four hundred and seventy two loans in there. Uh, seven of short term and long term loans, and you've got four hundred which are permanent loans, but it's nice.
Loan then, is it? Can't permanently loan something.
But the reason that came about was when they were setting up the museum, people wanted to donate, uh, family items to the museum. But then they questioned, what would happen to the museum if it all goes belly up? Then someone sort of said, well, the district council have it, and people said, oh, we're not having none of that. So they come, they coupled up with this idea of a permanent loan, which is no such thing. And the paperwork that accompanied it is, is just not there. I mean, a lot of the loans were done on handshakes and things like, of course. When I, when I got onto this, I had people getting off the email, can you track this loan, can you track this, can you track that?
Hmm.
Uh, I had one inquiry the other day, which was quite interesting, it come from John Walker.
All right.
And I'm not random now, but.
No, of course, this is it.
Basically, what it was, uh, Ben Shapleton was on the Quest Expedition, he dropped off into, uh, uh, Ramsgate to see Dame Janet Stagumwells.
Quite a lot of stuff at East Court.
Yeah, and. Dame Janet did, she commissioned a painter to quickly knock up a painting of his, uh, Quest in Ramsgate Harbour.
Oh, wow.
Of course, it's, it's in the arts directory on the face, on the, on the internet, and, uh, John's, is it in the inventory? And it is, but they got it stored in a cabinet.
Oh, wow, yeah.
But the actual state, the condition, uh, the condition of the artefacts in this horrendous environment. I went in there and had a look, and my God, I thought I should have put a mask on, I thought I might get Legionnaires' disease in summer. It's mold, it stinks, it smells, everything you pick up, anyway, randomly.
That's not, well.
Yeah, it's our heritage.
Yeah, can we just say thank you for all the hard work you're putting in there, Tony? Um, you know, it's very, very, very well appreciated, and I'm sure the residents of Ramsgate would really appreciate it if we can get that museum sorted out and, and a proper disc displays on a reg, on a regular basis. So I thank you ever so much on behalf of the council for the work you're doing there, Tony, and thank you for that.
Yeah, yeah.
Forward to more.
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, item two, uh, to receive a note the minutes of the Thanet Area Committee meeting on the twenty third of January twenty three, over to Young Island.
So the sanitaria committee, um, is a, a committee that gets together from the various parish and town councils with T D C, um, they have, um, guest speakers, the guest speaker for January was Inspector Ian Swallow from Kent Police. Um, these are meetings that happen every month, and it's just a note, the minutes received for both of these noted.
Yeah, as, as you know, Chair, um, because nobody else wanted to do it, I was delegated to.
You were keen. You were keen.
It was a keen green.
I, I was delegated to have a watching brief on this, um, which I, which I had done, and I've commented back to them on some of the things that discussed, um, but I thought it was a good idea if everybody saw what was.
Absolutely.
What was happening, and some of it is, is quite interesting. Whoever takes this on in the new council, I think it's something that's well worth pursuing.
Nicely done.
Okay, so, uh, that's just a note the report, members, okay? And item three of eight, to receive a note further minutes of Thanet Area Committee meeting on the twenty seventh of February.
Okay, so that was the following.
That was the following meeting, so, so we've covered that, okay, thank you. Uh, members, item nine is the date and time of the next meeting, and that is Wednesday, twenty sixth of April at seven P M. And look forward to seeing all of you then, because that'll be the last, obviously the last meeting before the elections. And, um, thank you very much for your attendance, and thank you very much to our residents, if you're still watching, thank you. End of meeting.